Welcome. We thank you all for being here tonight. To the, for the March Commissioners Meeting. I tell you what, I'm kinda, Brent and I just came off a baseball field. We coaching South Davie Middle School Baseball Team and they about wore us out today. So bear with us, be patient with us. We're glad you're here. It's a great place to raise a family and raise kids. And we just pray tonight we do the business of the county in a right and proper way. I'd like to call on Pastor Rodney Barker from Refuge Community Church. Pastor Barker has been at Refuge for 20 years now. And he's been a minister of the gospel in Davie County. And I used to play baseball with family members. And Rodney's a good man and good for the community. And we're glad you're here tonight.
Blessed to be here tonight and my burden and prayer for this county and this, and the town of Moxville and the county as a whole that all the needs be met and everything, all the needs and everything that needs to be accomplished here in this area, you have my prayers. I just want you to know that and I want to give honor to all of you tonight. Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Father, I come before you this evening in the name of Jesus. Lord, I thank you for this honor. I thank you for this opportunity to be able to come to this Commissioners Meeting and just to pray for these leaders and just to pray for them as they continue to do what needs to be done in this town and this, in this county. Lord, I pray that you would just come amongst them. And Lord, most of all, I pray that you would give them wisdom. I pray, Lord, that you would help guide them. I pray that you would help lead them. And Lord, I also pray that you would protect them at this time. And Lord, I know that we're living in a day where we're living in a crucial time. But Lord, we know that you are in control of it all. You the ruler and the reiner of everything. And Lord, I believe by faith right now that you would continue to give them the wisdom to be able to do what you have called them to do and what you have appointed them to do. I pray, Lord, for each one of them. I pray for their families. I pray, Lord, that everything that is talked about tonight and that is discussed, Lord, I ask that you would be in the midst of it. And Lord, I pray that you would continue to guide each one of them as they continue to do everything that's concerned in this area. And Lord, we just thank you for being, I thank you, Lord, for being a resident of Moxville. I thank you, dear heavenly Father, for just being somebody that could stand in this county and undergird each one of these dear folk with the power and the Holy Spirit, Lord, right now. And Father, I just ask you to move as only you can move and I'll be sure to praise you and just give you the glory for all that you do. I'm asking this in the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Barker. We really appreciate you being here tonight. Tonight, our pledge of allegiance will be led by Jason Sibelli. Jason enlisted into the United States Marine Corps in November of 2011 and spent three years in active duty where he earned the rank of corporal before receiving an honorable medical discharge. Jason served as a military police officer and was assigned to the Second Law Enforcement Battalion, working in a deployable field unit. Jason deployed in 2013 to the capital of Yemen to the United States Embassy, where there he assisted in combat operations against Al Qaeda while cooperating with American and multinational special operations teams and governments. He provided security and patrols to the embassy while protecting the ambassador to the United States and all Department of State employees working at the embassy. While overseas, Jason and his company assisted in the evacuation of all the Department of State employees and ambassador. Jason received the Global War on Terrorism Expeditionary Medal, the Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, National Defense Service Medal, Good Conduct Medal, Sea Service Deployment Ribbon, Rifle Sharpshooter Badge, and Sharpshooter Pistol Badge. Jason now lives in Moxville with his wife and three children. Jason, thank you for being here, leading us in the pledge. We really appreciate your service.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Jason, did you want to say anything? Good. All right. Thank you for being here. All right. Ethics and conflicts disclosure. Mr. Vogler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Presenting the North Carolina General Statute 168-86 and the Davie County Code of Ordinance, Code of Ethics adopted December the 2nd, 2019. I'd ask each of you, before you adopt the agenda, if there's any actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest with respect to any matter on the proposed agenda which will come before the board tonight for a vote. If so, please speak up and let the board know now, so before you adopt the agenda. Seeing no one speak up, I conclude there's no actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest by any board member. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Ms. Finney, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Renninger. All in favor, uplifted hand. That's unanimous. Public comment, period. Mr. Vogler.
No one has signed up for a public comment tonight, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Public hearing on zoning map amendment 2023-03, Mr. Hendrix.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. Commissioners, tonight I present to you zoning map amendment 2023-03. The request is to rezone approximately 19.02 acres from residential 20, R20, and residential agriculture RA to residential 8, conditional, which is R8C. The property is located at 409 Farmington Road. The property is further described as Davie County Tax Parcel F5000038. The zoning district currently is R20 and R8. The land use plan, the long-range land use plan identifies this area as commercial. The applicant is Mr. Robert Hendrix. As we said before, the property size is approximately 19.2 acres. The land use designates this as commercial and the proposed land use is looking at this in the long-term as residential. As you can see, the zoning district surrounded it. To the north of the property is a vacant piece of property. It's zoned RA and R20. To the west of the property is a vacant piece of property. It's zoned RA. To the south of the property is a residential property in its zoned highway business. And to the east of the property is residential. And this is R20. The property was originally zoned in 1973 as RA and R20. The proposed rezoning is an R8 residential multi-dwelling district that is established for high density. It adds units per acres where the principal use will be multifamily development with some single-family dwellings on individual lots. Because of the higher density of development, it is expected that it will be located in a growth area where public water and sewer are available. The site is currently served by public water and will have access to public sewer within 18 months to accommodate. It does have public sewer running and they're in the process of establishing upgrades to the lift station. The Davie County Growth Enhancement Strategy indicates this as a primary growth area. With this property, since it is not a basic rezoning, it is a conditional rezoning. As a part that was approved through the planning board, the applicant has included these conditions to be considered as a part of it. Maximum will be 72 lots pending further analysis, maybe based on the results of a wetland study. Those 72 lots may be decreased. They will not be increased. The applicant has agreed to a pocket park, hiking trails in the floodplain, adult park, et cetera. They're asking for four units to the acre, around 3.97. The density, the zoning would allow 12, so it's less. They are willing to dedicate a greenway easement to the county in the rear of the floodplain. The developer is not building any greenway on the property, just dedicating an easement for the county to use, to build if they choose to, to connect the schools. There are going to be creek buffers and they'll, will maintain approximately 50% common open space with this development. As we said, the board has three options to consider. To consider to rezone with conditions. The conditions applied can be the ones that the applicant agree to, or the Commissioners can add any other conditions to the property as long as both parties agree to those conditions. They can deny it, or they can table, I'm sorry, defer. And at this time, I'd be more than happy to address any questions that this board may have.
Any questions for Mr. Easter? Show.
Mr. Easter, you said that was like, what's it currently, I'm not current zoning, but you say it's currently looked at in the growth plan for, did you say business kind of?
It's a primary growth area and in the long-term development plan, it's indicated as commercial.
Commercial, yeah. Okay.
Ms. Easter.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, go ahead.
I was going to say that the, the planning board at our February 28th meeting approved the rezoning unanimously. I know they deferred it, sent it to this board, we sent it back. They did hear it and approved the rezoning request with conditions unanimously.
Okay. The understanding the sewer is on the way, hope to be up in June of 2024, that, the sewer capacity policy's been clearly conveyed to the applicant?
Correct. Correct. And the rezoning request to this, it is, it is preferred they have access, but if this property is rezoned, it's not a stipulation of it to have access to the sewer. If they have access to sewer, they would get the increased density. If they don't, they would fall back on the requirements and having to install in septic tank systems on that. So in order to get the smallest amount of density and property size, they have to have access to city sewer.
Did the zoning board put some conditions already in place?
The conditions, they agreed they did not add any more conditions. They just agreed to the conditions that the applicant.
Okay. Were there any neighbors that came to that meeting to speak?
Yes.
Or for?
We had one gentleman speak in opposition of the rezoning request.
The, four units to the acre, that's based on having sewer?
Actually, it's 12 with sewer. So that would be the density, okay? So they could put 12 units per acre. They're only asking for four. The way this property is developed, the rear of the property cannot be used with, due to access of creeks and various things. So all the development will be pushed forward to the front of the property and spread out.
So the 72 units is based on having sewer?
Correct. Correct.
What then, what then is the estimate if you don't have sewer? How many, how many units?
It would be subject to having a soil analysis perk test on individual lots, putting individual septic tank systems out there. So the lot size would be dependent upon the suitability of the soil.
Other questions for Mr. Easter? Okay, we can move to the public hearing then.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The chair has announced this is the day and hour of the public hearing pursuant to Chapter 160D of the General Statutes of North Carolina and Chapter 155 of the Davie County Code of Ordinance of an Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance Regarding Davie County Parcel F538 Located at 409 Farmington Road, Moxville, North Carolina, Consistent in Approximately 19.02 Acres From R20 Residential And R Agricultural To Residential 8 Which Is A Conditional Residential Permit. There has been due notice given pursuant to the requirements of North Carolina General Statutes and also the Davie County Code and Orders by way of publication of notice of the public hearing in the newspaper and general circulation of Davie County. The clerk to the board has attached the affidavit showing publication in said paper. I'd ask for each person who wishes to comment at this public hearing to come first, forward to the podium, first state your name for the board, and then comment on the proposal. I think we've got three that's signed up so far. James McKnight was the first one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm James, or Jimmy McKnight, as my friends call me, and I live in Mooresville. And with me tonight is Richard Densler, who's my partner, and Mr. Robert Hendrix is here with us. And so we are interested in building some homes here. I've got a presentation that I think we can get Johnny to pull up for us. We've been in negotiations with Eastwood Homes. We don't have a contract there with them yet. But what we're looking to put there are some nice duplexes. These duplexes would be sold to the public. They're not rentals. And we know that your long-range plan calls for that area to become industrial or commercial. And we just happen to think with the schools up there, it's much safer to make it residential than it is to be commercial. And we would hope to have your support. We are expecting to get water and sewer. I think the math says we could do, under the zoning of R8, we could do 228 units. So we're voluntarily telling you we're absolutely not going to exceed 72. And based on the soils conditions in the wetlands, we may not get that. But we are expecting to use water and sewer and help my friend Terry Brawley get some houses in the community for these new people that are moving in to live in. And I'm here to answer any questions. Unfortunately, our engineer is not here. But Johnny, if you want to show the pictures of the elevations of the homes, so they are This is a model home called the Ashland that's built by Eastwood Homes. And they're typically in the $320,000, $325,000 range.
While everyone's looking at that, I, quick, this, I'm a little confused over the sewer issue. So you're, you're willing to wait the 18 months, approximately 18 months to begin the development of the property?
The real reason to get the R8 zoning is to get the setbacks that we desire because we're aware that most people don't want an acre and acre and a half yard to mow and keep up anymore. And these are for young families that are starting to work and starting their careers. And so we are dependent upon the water and sewer and we would be waiting that length of time until that's in place before we could actually, now, we could begin some of the project before that, but it would be dependent upon having a willingness to serve letter that we were going to get the utilities.
I will tell you, my son's about to begin a career as a teacher and he would not be able to afford that home.
These homes would have been in the $275,000 range about two years ago. What they're going to be two years from now is anyone's guess, but prices, as you know, diesel fuel and concrete and everything has been up and then it's coming down. And so two years from now, when we're actually putting houses on the ground, they may be back down to that. But it's awfully hard to build a new home with any quality in it that's under 300 grand right now. And I certainly would think that in the community, you want some nice homes instead of something that's just really, really cheap. I mean, I've been doing this for a long time. I sold Eastwood two projects last year, Richard and I did, and they build a nice home. There's others out there that build a much cheaper home that is just not something I want to be doing.
Are they, are all of them going to be basically the same? I don't mean exactly the facades and all that, but like, are the?
They're going to vary. They're all going to vary and have independent different facades. And these, what you're seeing here mostly is a quadplex, which is five units. We may have a few of those in there, but most of them are going to be duplexes because people in a duplex have windows on three sides and they like that much better and they sell much better. So it's going to have, there's going to be some single-family homes. In fact, Mr. Hendrix is getting a lot for his daughter. And so we're going to be doing a lot of duplexes that have windows on three sides. And there may be the occasional quad or fiveplex in there, but we prefer to not do them, you know, unless we just have to do a few of them.
How many bedrooms do they typically have? Three?
Ashland has three bedrooms, two and a half baths, an interior garage, and parking for a second car in the driveway.
Do you have any accurate data as to like, how many people typically live? I mean, there are a lot of, I mean, I see a lot of these type housing when I visit Raleigh and they're, a lot of those are owned by older couples and even individuals. But have you seen any pattern that could attest to that? Because I mean, a lot of the questions we get about this is how much traffic you're going to have. And obviously, you're going to have less traffic with one person living there or a couple living there. And I know you can't know, but.
Typically, re-infractions, 3.6 probably would be close, 3.5, 3.6 would be an average. But what we will do is when we apply to NC DOT for our curb cut and our traffic permit, they will stipulate to us that we either must or may not have to do what's called a TIP, a Transportation Improvement Plan. And we would have to do a study, which is 30, 35, $40,000. And we would have to take the type of home that we're putting there and they would sit there between six and seven, seven and eight, eight and nine in the morning, come back in the afternoon, and they would mathematically calculate how many would be turning left to go to the school, how many would be turning right to go to the interstate, what peak hours during the day they would come, and therefore, any off-site improvements that needed to be made, even if it's a traffic light a quarter of a mile down the street. If we're generating enough to cause that to need to happen, if an intersection down the street goes from a three to a four, or from a C to a D, they're going to look at us and say, you've got to fix this. And so we're typically used to doing it wherever we do this.
So y'all end up getting into these projects and then find out you've got to spend a little bit per DOT's requirements after?
I just did a Publix in Mooresville and they asked for $9 million in off-site improvements and we were able to thankfully get that down considerably, or we couldn't have done the project. Yeah, they liked a lot of obligations on us guys. So, but we're putting a lot of parkland in there. Over half of this is open space. We're, we are putting in the provision there for a greenway because I can see the kids, if these other projects develop or other properties eventually develop in time, there could be a bike path or a greenway up to the schools that the kids could use. And over half of it's going to be in parks and open space as it is. So we're leaving places for children to play and places for young families to have a home, come to work in your community. I think we were here, the last time we were here, there was a huge company that was coming that was going to make a diaper and the big machine was made in Germany and y'all made a grant to them to help them out. I think 52 jobs was offered up, so.
Any other questions? Okay. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We had Mr. Hendrix signed up. I don't know if he's, okay. And then Mr. Dimmer?
I did as well.
That's all we had signed up. I don't, if there's anyone else that wishes to come forward to speak either for or against, please come on up to the podium, state your name.
Thank you all. I'm Emmerick Crawford. I live next door to Robert, to the property, and have a few questions. I wonder if there's a site plan available for what y'all have proposed?
Not a file or site plan.
Do you have a preliminary?
We've got, we've got an illustration that shows where the units would be on the property in regards to the stream buffers and the creek crossing and the setbacks from the wetlands.
And how close to Farmington Road?
Correct.
Yeah. Have y'all asked the DOT for a traffic count out there on Farmington Road?
We haven't, as of yet.
Have you talked to the DOT at all?
We have, trying to find, figure out the, get a right way down through there, what we needed for turn lanes and so forth.
Have they indicated that you would probably have to put in a turn lane? You'd have to fund that?
Yes, that's correct.
They have told us that?
They haven't told us that, but if we, if they do tell us that we would, and we've accommodated the site plan, allow for that right away, the turn lane.
Right. I don't know what the current traffic count is. Has, have y'all as Commissioners determined what the traffic count is on Farmington Road currently?
We have not.
I would propose that, before you make that decision, that you, you probably do need to know what that traffic count is because now that the high school is there and the junior school, that traffic has really increased on the road. And I've been part of the problem. I waited 30 years to turn a piece that was zoned back in 91, commercial. Waited 30 years to put something on that property. It's now Dollar General store. And we, Martha and I, she's deceased now, but we had the opportunity to put restaurants out there. We did not do it because one thing of the traffic. And when we zoned in 91, we did 10 acres for highway business and we had heavy restrictions put on it because we were putting a special use permit for Dr. Jim Meeker, who started a veterinary hospital. He's outgrew that and now he's on up Farmington Road. We had the opportunity to put a restaurant in that vacant building where the hardware store was. We elected not to do that because of the traffic. And we were waiting for the catch-up of the DOT to address the traffic on Farmington Road. Now, they, they have helped that by putting the first roundabout in and we're all aware that they're, they will have the other roundabout in by the end of the year on the north side. But the big problem is, I think, the turn lane. They had a meeting last week and I think it was determined that, that meeting indicated that they would have to put in lanes all the way to Putting Ridge Road. And that was 10 years out, 10 years. Martha and I waited 30 to see something happen so we could actually develop the 10 acres that we had. One of the restrictions that was put on us when we zoned that property, we had to leave a 100-foot buffer to be zoned rural agriculture. And that's where we now live, built our own house. And I'm wondering, if it is approved, what would happen to the zoning where our current house exists? My daughter lives in one, I live in one, and we have one other there that is on that property. In 93, whenever the county needed the access for sewer to get to the school, Martha and I donated ours for the ability to tie onto it, which we did. And we tied our hardware store to it. We have now tied Dollar General to it. There's not that much more for us to do, but I think what I've heard is the people north of, say, the Shell Station, all the way up to Farmington are really worried about traffic more than anything. And I certainly want Robert and Kay to be able to capture whatever they need out of their property. And I'll say this, if it is denied to them, Robert has been assured that there are families that would buy that from him. But I, I don't, I don't have any qualms about the houses. I think they're beautiful, what these gentlemen have shown. And it's, it's all about, I think we're, we're just. what these gentlemen have shown, and it's, it's all about, I think we're, we're just, we're reactive rather than proactive, and I think Terry Brayley has, has done a tremendous job to bring industry to this county, but I think we failed him in not being able to think ahead far enough to have the infrastructure, not just water sewer and whatnot, but specifically traffic, and it's, you know, if Norman Rockwell, you know who that was, if he were to draw a caricature of Davie County now, I think it'd be, probably Terry would be on one horse of a pair of horses pulling a two-gang, uh, pin-haird through a pasture, and one of those gangs would be the county commissioners on the back, the other gang would be the planning department on the other side, and behind them about thirty feet or further would be the DOT plowing up a road, and behind that would be Julia Howard with a whip trying to make it move along real fast. But we, we really need to be proactive, we, we need to be thinking about where the county is going, and have those roads done and available. So, that's all I've got to say, I just, I've been part of the problem, because we did zone back in ninety-one out there, and there's, you know, we've got a concrete plant coming, we've got the storage facilities out there, all of that is clustering right there on that Farmington intersection, so, uh, just like these developers, I'm sure they have put a ton of money into putting together what they've done here, and that presents a nice picture for me. I'll say this, Martha and I spent thirty thousand dollars working to see about putting a restaurant out there, and we forego that, so that's part of the expensive development. Anyway, thank y'all for letting me talk, and we'll see what happens, but get a traffic count if you would.
Anyone else like to come forward to comment at this public hearing? Chair, seeing no one further come to comment, I'd now turn the public hearing back over to you as board chair, board chair to close the public comments section of this public hearing, provide the board with opportunity to discuss among yourselves what, if any, action we should take with regards to this matter.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Motion to close the public hearing. Ms. Schof, Mr. Poindexter, second, all in favor, uplifted hand. Okay. All right, open the floor for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to make the comment that the, we don't get to tell the state, which every person on this board realizes that, what they're going to do. They do that in their own time and at, at their own will, but I think this property is in an area that needs to be developed as it's proposed according to the land, land use plan, and I'm going to make the motion that we adopt this rezoning with the conditions stated by the planning board.
Okay, all right. We have a, we have a motion from Mr. Poindexter, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Renninger seconds the motion. Any other discussion? Schof?
I'd say this is one of the most difficult, I have not been on here very long, but it's difficult to try to be fair and do what's right or best, everybody's got a different perspective. Um, I think, you know, we're in the process of trying to put some things in place and be a little more deliberate, and I know we're going to be meeting some with planning and zoning about growth and ways that we may address it, or ways we can get a little ahead of it, so forth. But I think if you go to any area, I think what keeps coming back to me on this particular area is it's near an interstate area, and there's pressures anytime you've got that to develop, just like there will be pressures for certain amounts of development when we get the Baltimore Road interchange done, for us to set back and think that's just going to be ingress and egress to I-40 for the next fifty years, we know that's not going to be the case. In a perfect world, maybe that would be the case, in a perfect world, every high school and middle school could be on their own designated dead-end road, but we know that's not the case. So, um, I just feel pretty good about this particular development, not that I'm knocking down the doors for development, but I do feel like the process served us pretty well, we deferred it back, the developers have given us some information and some concessions that seem to be things that we would want in a process like this, rather than just us passing it the other night after it was three to three, and then the vote became six to nothing. So, I mean, you know, I think each one of these cases is going to have to be looked at individually, and, you know, at this point, and I'm, you know, I'm, have asked tons and tons and tons of questions about this, and in my heart, I just do not feel like it will create major impacts. Now, if you start talking about the tip of the iceberg and us having twenty more developments like that, that's a whole different discussion, but I don't know that, you know, you're going to notice, you're going to notice more cars in and out of businesses, if this had become a Bojangles or something like that, then I think you're going to have the way people work from home and so forth now, so, I, I feel pretty good about it, I feel like they've done their due, due diligence, and I tend to, you know, with reservations, still feel like it would be bad on my part to shut this down.
We have a motion and a second, other comments? You going to say something, Terry? No, you go ahead, you go ahead.
Yeah, I would just say that, you know, we, we keep getting these rezoning cases, and the plan that we have right now is the plan we're looking at, we have talked amongst this board, maybe we need to redo the plan, and I, we're going to continue to, and we're going to be, we're an attractive place, we all know that, but we're going to continue to be dealing with these rezoning cases, and that's good and bad, but I do think we need, this board needs to look at maybe our overall plan and make sure that's where we wanting to go. The other thing I would say, taking that a step further with the plan we have, it does show this is industrial or commercial from basically the middle school all the way to forty, and, you know, I think this is a nice transition project, I really do, and, you know, the seventy-two units gives me a little heartburn, but, but again, it's a transitional use, so that's the reason I'm supporting this. Thank you.
Any others?
I would refer you, we received an email from Mr. Miss Parish, neighbors of the property, earlier in the week, they were coming tonight, and they were, they got stuck in traffic, and, you know, I'm not going to, you have their email, but I do want to just refer you back to that, it talks about many of the issues that Mr. Crawford brought up, and would tell you, yes, please, go ahead, Terry.
To Mr. Crawford's point on the traffic, he makes a great point, but we have been dealing with the state at least four years for this whole area, the Farmington area traffic plan, they move at a glacial pace, you can't speed them up from what I can tell, but we have identified this as a whole growth area plan, and we've asked the state for input, and we've had meetings, but there's not, again, if someone knows a better way to get these people to speed up, I'd love to hear about it, but we have tried, so just want to make that point as well.
We, we have attempted to be proactive, and Terry, Terry indicated well what, what we're running into, but I would just say, we, we, we do attempt to be proactive in regards to that, but the state runs at their own pace, DOT, and so, I appreciate the comments on, on that, though. I will tell you this, we, Brent brought this up, we're going to have discussions on this, we've already had discussions with Mr. Easter about projects that are coming up, we're going to have discussions about overlays, a lot of options that we can use to be as, in Mr. Crawford's words, more proactive in terms of what we're doing out, especially in that area, because it's, it's, I don't want to say a whole lot about that, but it can get out of hand quick, and we have, we are going to have to think ahead, and we have plans in place to sit down and begin to have discussions in a, in a proactive, intentional way about what we're going to do about, in regards to Farmington Road, I would say that whole corridor, even out beyond the high school, because there's, there's always discussions of projects up and down Farmington Road. Any other comments on this?
I'd add one thing to what Mark is talking about, and that, you know, this is not one that we're taking lightly, and we are in talks to do things, even from the context of safety within some of the developments that have been brought to my attention that are across the county, that where you have an eighty-foot lot that's at the frontage, and then you go back eight hundred, you go back four hundred feet, getting the three, thirty thousand square feet, you're creating even high density with that, or at least high density and traffic ingress and egress and ingress that's kind of dangerous, and that's something that we're also looking at, because we want to try to get ahead of what is safer, what's acceptable, and what would look better, instead of having things that are being proposed now that we don't have anything to really address that with, we have nothing to combat that with from a standpoint of putting the opinions of the people and, you know, for something that would work better, so I'll, I'll be quiet, but we are working on it.
We have a motion and a second, any other comments? All right, all in favor of the motion, show by uplifted hand. All opposed? Four one. All right, next item, consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve?
Presentation.
Well, actually, Mr. Chair, we had a, you have an old copy of the agenda, our present, it's okay, our presenter tonight was under the weather, and is going to reschedule in the future to present.
Okay, thank you. Next item, consent agenda, motion to approve?
So moved.
Ms. Finney makes the motion, do I have a second? Mr. Poindexter, second, all in favor, uplifted hand, unanimous, okay. Next item, county managers' report.
Yes, I thank you, Mr. Chair, I want to start my report tonight off by updating you guys on a project that the Davie County Sheriff's Department partnered with Davie County Schools to receive a grant last fall to help increase the number of school resource officers in the school system. As of February, we now have at least one person who steps, we have at least one school resource officer that steps foot on every school here in Davie County, so I'm glad to see that partnership with the school system to help with that funding. I also want to thank Mr. Wallace and the school board for, we just went through a series of school tours, it was a great opportunity, especially for myself, being new to the county, to have an opportunity to go through all of our school facilities, to see all the great things that we're doing here in Davie County. My report tonight's a lot of thanks, I want to thank State Senator Jarvis, he helped us with some funding within the sheriff's office to get us some new cutting-edge technology that will allow our sheriff's deputies and personnel to enhance their abilities out in the field in a safe manner, that will add the continued professionalism that we have with our sheriff's department. I want to thank our public works director, Johnny Lambert, and Aaron Burris, they welcomed me out to the Sparks Road Water Plant a couple of weeks ago, I got to spend half a day out there to see all the things that they do every day to make sure that we have safe drinking water, and how important and serious operation that they have to make sure that everybody has clean water to drink. I want to thank our folks at nine-one-one, I got to spend some time out with them, Grayson, Allison, Stephen, and Carly, kind of gave me the ins and outs of all the things that they have to deal with, it's not just a matter of taking your call, but it's also a matter of making sure that we get dispatched out the appropriate personnel to the scene of any particular event. This past Friday, me and Commissioner Finney had an opportunity, we were invited out to our four-H achievement night, it was a great opportunity to see all of our young folks who are going above and beyond, it's not just playing video games and texting each other, these, these kids are out every day, doing some wonderful projects, so I want to thank Danny and Colleen for inviting us, also want to thank the parents and volunteers, without their support, we wouldn't have a great four-H organization that we do have. Mark your calendars, for March twenty-first, at two P.M., we are going to have the groundbreaking for our new water treatment plant out in Kool-Aimie, this is a fifty-million-dollar project, and it's going to replace two one-hundred-year plants, so this is the first step, it's roughly, I'm going to go out on a limb, and you guys can hold me to this, but I'm thinking it's probably a two-year project, but this is the first, well, I'd probably say the second step, the first step was getting funding, so we're going to put shovels in the ground on the twenty-first for that project. I want to announce that the Register of Deeds, Kelly Thunderburg, kicked off her People Not Property project, they have thirty-three residents who have volunteered to help through that project, to make sure that we get all of our documentation updated, they're going to have two more virtual sessions, if anybody's interested, on March the twentieth and thirtieth, and if you're interested, you can contact the Register of Deeds office, and they can help you out. And then finally, I'm going to ask Mr. Paul Moore, our Recreation and Parks Director, to come up to do a little announcement.
Evening, commissioners, just wanted to make a quick announcement, Friday, we were notified by the North Carolina Division of Parks and Recreation Authority meeting that our accessibility for parks grant for our Canopla Treescape has passed muster, we are in the fourth quarter, two-minute warning and victory formation, only waiting for the Division of Parks and Recreation to send us our letter of award. This is huge for our community, huge for our special needs families, and huge for veterans with disabilities, as this project will be of universal design, custom design, specific for those individuals, but for all people, and another addition to a beautiful park already in phase one completion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's my report.
Any questions for Mr. Barnett? Comments? I tell you what, Paul, that's, that's, that's good news, that is real good news, happy to hear that. All right, any old business? Any new business? Okay, let's go to commissioners' comments, Mr. Schof?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, just like to go back to what's the development and growth planning and so forth, I would ask that people, you know, get with us, share your opinions, they're all valuable, many of you know my concerns about that in and of itself, so it is a real concern, but we, you know, we need you to share those concerns with us on any of these issues, and, you know, so we can weigh that out and take it into consideration, we're trying to make the best possible decision for all parties, thank you.
Mr. Renninger?
Thank you, I appreciate everyone coming out, and again, we got a lot going on, and we appreciate your input, and please don't be bashful, and come back next week, next month, rather, you can come back next week, too, but you might want to wait till the end of the month, okay, thank you.
Mr. Poindexter?
Yes, I would also like to say thank you to everybody for coming out, it's nice to have informed people come and speak to us, and that's what we had, people that know what's going on in the county. And that's what we had, uh, people that know what's going on in the county and how to address it. Um, I would like to say thank you to all the county employees. They do such a wonderful job and work, work really hard at what they do. And I'm sitting here trying to get this Norman Rockwell picture out of my mind, but, uh, I guess it'll be there a while. Thank you.
Ms. Finney?
Thank everyone for coming out tonight, and for those who shared their opinions with us. And, um, I piggyback off of Brian, we really had a good time at the, uh, four-H achievement night. It's always impressive to see what those young people are doing and, um, the, what they're learning and the things that they do on their own. They're, they're encouraged to, to do a lot of the work. They set up the banquet hall by themselves and did the decorations, and I always enjoy being there. If you get a chance and you're in Kool-Aimie, I recommend you go by their new playground. They got some new playground equipment with some grant money, and it looks great. They did a lot of work, and I hope that the town really enjoys that. And this morning, I was excited to see a lot of work going on at the new EMS building on Cronetza Road, so hopefully they can get a lot done in between the rain. But, um, just hope everyone is enjoying this weather, and thank you for coming.
All right. Um, I can't add much to that. I will say this, um, we were, um, we were honored, I think, to, many of us to, uh, tour our schools, um, over the last thirty, thirty, forty-five days. Uh, and I'm telling you, there are great things happening in our schools. Um, a lot of energy, a lot of energy. Of course, Brent knows that. I, uh, told you earlier, he and I are, uh, helping to coach one of the baseball teams, and I will tell you this, you know, it's kind of like the, the four-H issue. Um, he, in a cup, two or three practices ago, uh, the honor roll came out, and we like to, you know, applaud the kids on this team who, who really achieved, because, uh, many of those kids don't, um, they don't have the home life that you, you and I have and your children have. Many of them, uh, have obstacles that they have to face. But, you know, Brent and I asked, who made the honor roll on this, this team of baseball players? And I played baseball my whole life, so I know normally it's not the brightest group of people on the face of the earth. Every one of those kids raised their hand. Every kid on that baseball team, fifteen of them, made the honor roll. And I'm going to tell you, I just couple that with the tours that we did. There, you know, uh, uh, buildings is kind of like churches are people, they're not buildings. Our schools are the kids that are in those buildings, and the teachers that are in those buildings. And I can tell you, there's some good things happening. And, um, so that, that was just, that was just, uh, uh, just a wonderful last thirty days that we've had. And I, I will tell you this, we see out here, sitting out here, great employees of this county. And, uh, you all are what makes this a great place to raise families. And, uh, these, these kind of growth pains that we've talked about tonight, uh, on Farmington Road, other parts of the county, uh, these are things we're just going to have to deal with and pray about and ponder and think on. Uh, but we must do it, and that's the reason we're here, and that's the reason you're here. And so, uh, we, we, we thank you for being here tonight. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Subway. Mr. Poindexter, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Finney, all in favor? We stand adjourned. Thank you for being here.